Excuse me, we're gonna call to order the November 19th meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. May we have a roll call?
Ms. Chester?
Here.
Mr. Cho? Ms. McLaughlin?
Here.
Ms. Yutman? Mr. Warren-Brown?
Here.
Mr. Weiskopf?
Here.
And Mr. Welch?
Here. I believe we have a quorum. Believe everybody's received the minutes of our... Is it last two meetings' worth? Or...oh, my printer went crazy then, because I have two. We're gonna entertain a motion as regards the minutes, unless there are any corrections. It's now been moved. Is there a second for that?
I'll second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The minutes are approved. At this time, I'm gonna swear in anybody who wishes to testify is not obligate you to testify, but you can't testify unless you stand and be sworn in. Do you swear or affirm that any testimony you give tonight will be true and accurate to the best of your beliefs?
I do.
Are there any written communications?
I did receive an email from the property owner of 807 East Main Street. I apologize, I did not print out that email. The property owner desired to know more information about the conditional use permit case for tonight. Specifically, he wanted to know what type of business was being proposed. The use variety store is kind of, I think, nebulous, so he requested more information, and I emailed him back yesterday.
Thank you. Do we have any continued public hearings? Hearing none, then I call the case ZBA 2016-C-02 for hearing. We have a staff report.
So, this case is a request by Rodney Howard for a conditional use permit to allow a home occupation, which is more commonly known as a home-based business, for a variety store at 706 East Main Street. That property is a duplex, a rental duplex, in the B2 neighborhood business arterial district, and Mr. Howard rents out the first floor of that building. The business would be operated from the front room of the house, and it has its own entrance off of the front porch. That front room is approximately 200 square feet. I didn't note that in the memo, but thought that might be useful. And the business would sell a variety of merchandise and convenience goods, and it would be targeted mostly to people in the surrounding neighborhood. The property owner is John Ellis, and he is in support of this application. Just for a little background regarding home occupations, city first added regulations for home occupations in 1999, and then in February of this year, the city council updated and expanded the home occupation regulations with the main purpose being to allow a wider variety of home-based business uses, while at the same time mitigating the negative impacts that the more, I guess, more intense uses could have on the surrounding neighborhood. So, our home occupations are now split into three different types: Type A, Type B, and Type C, and those go up from...Type A is very minimal impact. It's, you know, like somebody telecommuting out of their home. You probably wouldn't even know that there's a business being run there. Type B are things that include, like, music lessons, so you might generate a little bit of traffic to the home, but also pretty low traffic. And then Type C are more intense uses, and they require conditional use permits to minimize their impacts. The ordinance specifically qualifies onsite sales of goods and services as Type C and requires a conditional use permit, and that's why the conditional use permit is being sought in this case. If you look at Exhibit A in your memo, you'll see that the property is located along East Main Street. It's on the north side of Main Street, just west of Weber Street. If you're familiar with the area over here on the far right is the gas station. Secondhand Rose is down here off the map, and the Auto Zone is here, just to the west. The house itself, as I mentioned, is a duplex that...it looks like it was probably a single-family home at one point that was converted into a duplex some time ago. If you look at table...if you look at the table on Page 2, you can see the surrounding zoning and land uses for the site. I won't go through all of those. I will point out, I made a mistake here. To the south, it is not zoned B3 with a car wash. The B3 and car wash is to the east. To the south, it's zoned R3 and is a single-family residential, so apologize for that minor mistake there. Okay, so, the applicant is making this request to operate a small store out of that front room of this unit that he rents. It's at 706 East Main Street. As I mentioned, it has its own entrance off the front porch, and the business and the living spaces will be separated. This would be operated by the applicant initially. He does not foresee having any employees at first, though he may need to hire somebody in the future to help staff the store. The store would sell a variety of goods, including clothing such as jackets, purses, sunglasses. In the memo, it says gift cards. I meant to put greeting cards, so I think that's important to note. And then he would also be selling things like candy and soft drinks. The goods that he will purchase, he'll get off-site, and so there will be very few, if any, deliveries to the site, and the operating hours would be from 10:30 to 7:30, and they would never exceed or never go later than 7:30. Most of the clients would...are anticipated to come from the surrounding neighborhood and would be arriving on foot, but there is parking space in the driveway if people drive there. There's also street parking on Weber, and if need be, on the south side of Main Street. And the site's also served by the number seven MTD bus, and there are bike lanes on both sides of Main Street. The site is well-suited for business use. As mentioned, it is zoned B2, and the B2 district is intended to provide basic commercial uses in close proximity to low-density residential areas. Comprehensive plan also identifies this area along East Main Street. Let me see in Exhibit C, the future land use map. There's a note in the comp plan to encourage neighborhood businesses that can serve the neighborhood along this corridor. Did want to note, and I noted in the memo, that a variety store is permitted by right in the B2 district, but since this is an accessory use to the principal use, that it being a residence, it would require...or it's considered a home occupation, and therefore requires a home occupation permit and the conditional use permit. So, I'd just like to briefly run through the requirements for a conditional use permit along with some analysis. The first is that the proposed use is conducive to the public interest...or, sorry, public convenience at that location. The store would be selling a variety of items focused, as I said, on clientele from the surrounding neighborhood, and the property is zoned for neighborhood business, also identified in the comp plan as an area to encourage businesses. Number two is that the proposed use will not be unreasonably injurious or detrimental to the district or otherwise to the public welfare. The use is designed, located, and operated so that it will not be injurious or detrimental to the district or to the public welfare. As I mentioned previously, it has its own entrance off the front porch. The operating hours would never exceed 7:30 PM. Most customers...and most customers, whether by foot or car, or transit or bike, would have good access to the site. Number three is that the proposed use conforms to the applicable regulations and standards of and preserves the essential character of the district in which it's located. It's zoned B2, neighborhood business arterial, and located in an area that already has a mix of business and residential uses, so the proposed use is compatible with both the zoning and the surrounding land uses. Section 72 of the zoning ordinance says that the Zoning Board of Appeals shall determine whether the reasons set forth in the application and the evidence presented during the public hearing justify the granting of the conditional use permit, and whether the proposed use will be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance, and will not be unreasonably injurious or detrimental to the district in which it shall be located or otherwise injurious or detrimental to the public welfare. In addition, the Zoning Board may impose additional conditions and requirements on the operation of the proposed use. The options in this case are to grant the conditional use as requested, to grant the conditional use with certain terms and conditions, which should be articulated accordingly, or to deny the conditional use. Staff recommends that the Zoning Board of Appeals grant the proposed conditional use in this case with the following conditions: that the business will not stay open past 7:30 PM, that the business will have at most one employee, that all sales will be conducted indoors, that one parking space will be provided in the driveway for customers, that one wall sign up to three square feet will be permitted, and that electronic signs and LED light strips are prohibited. That concludes my report. I can answer any questions that you have. I know that the applicant is also here if you have any questions for him. Thank you.
Are there questions for staff? Go ahead.
I just have one clarification. In the conditions listed, that the business will have at most one employee, does that...you suggested that they might have more than one employee. I mean, does the owner count as an employee?
When I wrote that, I was assuming the owner did not...
Count.
Did not count, so if you have suggestions for how that should be better worded, then...
I mean, maybe I'm just the only one that read it as that he would be an employee, but that doesn't necessarily make sense, so...I don't know that it's unclear, or if I just read it.
We could potentially use the language out of the home occupation regulations, which talk about the number of employees speaking...it uses a terminology other than members of the household residing in the dwelling unit.
Sure.
I mean, that's how the terminology is in the text, so we could add something like that.
Thanks.
Okay. Do we need to worry about anything like handicap accessibility here? Since there's a front porch with steps and things, do they need a ramp?
That's a good question.
Well, because this is part of a home occupation, we haven't required that for other home occupations, whether it's someone having a individual voice lesson, for instance. So, I don't have the building code section with me, but I'm going to assume that we would treat it similar to the other types of home occupations where that has not been a requirement of the building code.
Okay, and then the parking, there's no formula for the parking for a home-occupied business, like we'd have for apartments and things? One is sufficient?
There is no formula in the home occupation ordinance or in that section. I suppose we would, if we wanted to, we would revert to the parking table for that...for the use, and since it's 200 square feet, I think one space per 200 should be sufficient, but I can check on that real quick.
I will also point out, under a Type 2 home occupation, that's the kind that wouldn't generate as much potential for traffic. It indicates that up to two additional off-street parking spaces may be required by the zoning administrator to accommodate commercial vehicles, but that the off-street parking requirement may be waived or reduced...may be waived or reduced with approval by the zoning administrator based on demand generated by the use, location, and on-street parking supply, so there's some built-in administrative flexibility, at least for the Type B. So, I think we were looking at this somewhat the same way. Because this is a conditional use permit, there could be some flexibility built in there as well.
And then finally, I know if it's a house, we don't really care about them backing out on Main Street, but if it's a business, we would not want them to be backing out on a main artery under normal circumstances, or does this home occupancy, once again, make that not a safety issue, I guess?
Well, if it was...you're right. If it were a new commercial building, let's say, and that's all that they were doing there, it would have to meet all of the other requirements. For instance, if they wanted to have a parking lot that backs out onto the street, they would need to get a variance for that. But because this would be a home occupation, we don't have the same type of requirement because primarily is the residential use. What is being proposed is an accessory use to that primary residential use.
Thank you.
I will just point out, I'm looking at our parking table, and I think that...so, at most for retail and business-type uses, we would require one space for 250 square feet of floor area, so I think this is sufficient.
My question is that a home occupation, if the current tenant is no longer the tenant and the business closes, does the conditional use go away?
I believe so.
Yes, the applicant would no longer...so, the applicant that's listed here, the conditional use permit in this case would go along with the...well, would cease, and I would suppose the chances that the next tenant would want to do exactly the same thing would be pretty minimal, but I guess if that did happen, we could figure out if we should come back for a reapproval, but I'm doubtful that the exact same application would come in again.
Are there any further questions for staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is the applicant present, or anyone wants to speak in favor of this petition? Come forward. You need to sign in before you start speaking, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Would you please introduce yourself for the record?
My name is Rodney Howard.
Proceed.
Was there any questions toward the business?
Okay, so you don't have any statement, you're just wanting to know if we have any questions?
Yes, well, the only statement I'd just like to have is...
Go ahead.
...I appreciate your assistance, Kevin, and I appreciate y'all taking time out to look over this and, you know, go through the process of it and everything, because I'm looking forward to this being a stepping stone for, you know, a lot of other businesses that's trying to, you know, survive and, you know, what's going on as far as budgets and things of that nature, so appreciate y'all, all of y'all's assistance.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Hearing none. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Do we have one question?
Can I ask, in a variety store, what types of goods would you be selling?
Basically, the same as Kevin has mentioned, you know, candidatials, purses, you know, things of that nature, toys. Most of the things that I would probably be having in the store would be distributed from Sam's, you know, just a variety of just different things. And it's also...Chairs Merchandise is also about ideals that are nowhere else. You know, as far as my line of greeting cards, you know, they will be nowhere else. As far as some clothing products, they will be nowhere else, when Chairs, these franchises, hopefully, you know, most of the products there will only be in champagne or banner at Chairs Merchandise. And Chairs Merchandise is named after my daughter. Thank you.
Any further questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome, sir.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak in favor of the petition? Okay, I don't believe you were sworn, so I'm gonna have to...I said, I don't believe you were sworn in.
I'm ready to be sworn in.
Well, I'll do that, then. Would you please raise your right hand, sir? Do you swear or affirm that any testimony you give here tonight will be true and accurate to the best of your belief? Thank you. You also have to sign in, sir. Have a seat.
Thank you. My name is John Ellis, and I'm the owner of this particular property. I also own several other properties in the city of Abana. I've had some questions about owning further properties because I've had some complications, but I'm very happy now the city seems to be cooperating. The administrators was trying to help Mr. Howard, and I think that's a good omen on the city's part. They came out to the house, I saw them, I didn't interfere. I originally rented the property as a duplex, and I've got plenty of applicants. This is a rentals market now, not a buyers market. I'm 83 years old. I've been in the business for about 20 years. I'm a former housing inspector. I'm an urban planner. I'm a average citizen, just a local Joe Blow, and I'm trying to help Rodney get started. And I'm gonna, if he's successful, I'm gonna go over and give him all the expertise and help that I have. Now, when I bought this property, it was zoned B3. That's one reason why I bought it, was it was on general business, and the city saw fit to a down...it's been down zoned to B2. I had offers before as a B3 property, and in the midst of my negotiation, after it was down zoned, it didn't go through, so I lost money. That's no big deal. It's on B2. I don't mind renting to people or having a little small business there. The floor area ratio is adequate. Off-street parking, I noticed you talked about one parking space. There's two or three spaces in the...you can access from the alley behind this property to the north. You can access two...I park, I have people coming in all the time. You can get three or four cars in there if they wanted to. And there's also parking across the street. I think one parking space is adequate, and I'm standing ready to help Rodney be successful. When I came to the city and talked to the administrators, they were really delighted. They said the city is obligated and kinda leaning towards trying to help people start neighborhood business and home occupations. So, that's one reason why I signed on to it. And if it's not successful, I can always go back and rent it, but I want to keep Rodney there if he's approved, and I appreciate your consideration.
Hold on just a second. I don't think there'll be any, but...
I said, I don't think there'll be any.
Any questions, but I have to ask...or any questions for this witness? Hearing none. Now, you can leave.
Well, we thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I'm gonna see what your decision is.
All right.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Is there anyone who is opposed to this petition present? Hearing none. Are there any further questions for staff? Hearing none, then I believe we are at the point where we're ready to call this case for vote. Is there a motion?
I move that the Zoning Board of Appeals grant the proposed conditional use in ZBA case 2016-C-02 for the reasons articulated above and with the following conditions: the business will not stay open past 7:30 PM, the business will have at most one employee other than the residents of the property, all sales will be conducted indoors, one parking space for customers will be provided in the driveway, one wall sign up to three feet square is permitted, and electronic signs and LED light strips are prohibited.
It's now been moved...is there a second to that motion?
A second.
It's now been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? I believe we're ready for a vote.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Warren-Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Weiskopf?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
And Ms. Chester?
Yes.
That motion carries. The conditional use permit's been approved. Good luck, sir.
Thank you very much.
Hope everything goes well for you. We are now ready to call for hearing ZBA case 2016-Major-11. May we have a staff report?
Okay, let me pull that up real quick.
While Kevin's pulling that up, I'll take this as an opportunity to introduce the planner that authored the report. This is Marcus Ricci. He's our new planner, too, on staff. We made him write a memo right away, but we're not gonna make him present the first time, so he's gonna see how it's done first. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'd like to thank Marcus for putting this together on very short notice, and, as Lori mentioned, right after he came on board, so, thank you, Marcus. Okay, so, this case...in this case, Ivan Richardson is in the process of submitting a final plat for Lot 452 of Berenger Commons, number four. This property is one of the remaining undeveloped lots in Berenger Commons, and this variance that is requested would allow for 27-foot-wide access drives, which exceed the 45% maximum lot width allowed for this use. Berenger Commons, for a little background, is located north of University Avenue, and you can see that in Exhibit A. North of University Avenue, west of High Cross Road, the property in question is on the east side of Berenger Commons. Berenger Commons stretches further west and further north, and you can see on... Um, Berenger Commons stretches further west and further north than you can see on, on Exhibit A. Um, but this property is at the corner of Berenger Circle and Rutherford Drive. Um, the initial development of Berenger Commons took place in the early to mid nineteen nineties on the southwestern portion of the, of the entire development. And in the late nineteen nineties and early two thousands, there is development that sort of, uh, spread to the east and to the north. Um, and then, uh, development slowed considerably in two thousand seven and two thousand eight, um, as it did elsewhere. And then few homes have been developed since that time. Um, this site is, uh, two point seven five acres, and the proposed final plat for the site includes twelve lots, um, that would accommodate eleven single-family, um, common lot line, uh, townhomes, and then one model unit. Um, and I, let's see, there is a, uh, exhibit with that plat, or with the proposed replat, so I can pull that up here, so you can see what that configuration would, would look like. Okay, so there would be, um, four, four units, uh, four townhome units on, uh, Berenger Circle, the model unit, uh, on the northeast corner of the site, um, and then a group of three townhouses here, and then a group of four, uh, on the sou- southern part. Um, it's also, it is adjacent to common lot line, single-family residential developments to the south, and also to the east, um, across Rutherford Drive. There are detached, single-family residences to the west, um, across the pond, and then to the north are undeveloped, single-family lots. Now, the zoning ordinance limits the width of access and parking areas to forty-five percent of the total lot width, or eighteen feet, uh, whichever is greater. Um, and the proposed access drive width of twenty-seven feet would be in compliance for five of the lots, um, but for seven of the lots, um, it would exceed that forty-five percent. Um, and a major variance, uh, is required and is being requested. I did wanna point out, um, that this is a major variance request because, um, well, certain variances, you'll probably recall, um, it'll say something like less than twenty-five percent um, will be a minor variance. Um, but there is no, there's no, um, explicit minor variance language in the zoning ordinance for driveway widths. So, anything that isn't explicitly called out as a minor variance is, uh, a major variance. So, that's why this is a major variance, um, even though, uh, it's, you know, it's a matter of uh, one point eight to, to four point five feet in certain cases, I believe. Okay, so, this lot is zoned R4, medium-density, multiple-family residential, um, which permits, uh, single-family common lot line dwellings by right. Um, you can see in the table on page two, uh, that the surrounding land uses are, um, a mixture of R4, um, to the south and to the east, and then to the north, the R2, single-family residential. So, as mentioned, the applicant plans to construct these, uh, four, um, residential structures with the eleven, uh, common lot line townhomes, and then the one model unit. And his market research indicates that, um, these dwellings will be more marketable if they have three-car garages, and he is therefore proposing, um, these twenty-seven foot wide access drives, um, for each unit, so that access, um, so that, um, people living there can access the entire garage. Um, and as I mentioned, seven out of the twelve lots, um, or four-seven of the twelve lots, this would result in, in greater than forty-five percent of the lot width, and hence, uh, requiring the variance. Um, you can see on page three, there's a table of each of those lots, and you see that the, um, the widths vary from forty-eight percent of the lot width to fifty-four percent of the lot width. Um, I did wanna note that the adjacent lots, um, to the south with the, um, with the, uh, townhomes on them, I think you can see those here. Um, they have eighteen-foot wide, uh, driveways that take up sixty percent of the lot width. Okay, so, I'd like to run through the variance criteria. Uh, the first is that there, um, let's see, it says, "Are there special circumstances or special practical difficulties um, in carrying out the strict application of the ordinance?" Um, the market research that the applicant has done has determined that, um, these common lot line, that the common lot line configuration that he has proposed, um, with the attached three-car garages is the, uh, most economically feasible design. And application of the ordinance, uh, strict application of the ordinance would not allow the construction of access drives to, um, to allow access to the entire garage. Um, number two is that the proposed variance will not serve as a special privilege because the variance requested is necessary due to special circumstances. Um, as mentioned earlier, Berenger Commons has been under development for, uh, since the early nineteen nineties. It was first annexed into the city in nineteen ninety-one. Um, and market forces have, you know, the market has changed over time. Um, and, and therefore, um, adapting, um, there's, uh, development plans need to adapt to, to meet those changes. Um, so the proposed replat permits, um, the construction of these common lot line developments with the attached garages, uh, under the R4 zoning designation, and granting the variance would not allow additional units or increased density or occupancy, um, but would improve access to those permitted dwellings. Number three is that the variance requested was not the result of a situation having been knowingly or deliberately created by the petitioner. The applicant's been developing Berenger Commons for, for several years. Um, the housing market, uh, went down, uh, in the mid-two thousands, and housing markets have shifted, so that's required the applicant to, to shift his design, um, to this, uh, three-car garage model. Uh, number four is that the variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Um, as I mentioned a couple times, and as you can see, uh, on your screen, there are, um, adjacent, so this is where the units would be, and then further north. Um, you can see that the adjacent units are all, um, common lot line developments, and they all have relatively wide driveways, so we don't feel that it would alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Number five is that the variance will not cause a nuisance to the adjacent property. Um, we do not think that the, uh, variance would, would cause any foreseeable nuisances to adjacent properties. Um, number six is that the variance represents generally the minimum deviation from requirements of the zoning ordinance, uh, necessary to accommodate the request. Uh, the requested increase is really to make the driveways wide enough so that the three-car garages can be accessed. Um, so that is, uh, pretty much the minimum deviation, um, that is, is required. So, the options, uh, in this case are for the zoning board of appeals. Um, the zoning board of appeals can forward the case to the city council with a recommendation to approve the variance, uh, based on the findings in this memo, um, that would require a, a two-thirds vote, um, or four out of the five present tonight. Um, the second is that the zoning board may approve the variance with certain terms and conditions. Uh, in the memo, uh, it says that you can approve a lesser minor variance, um, but as I pointed out earlier, um, for driveway width, minor variances aren't allowed, so, um, that's sort of a moot point. Um, and the last is that the zoning board of appeals may deny the variance. The staff recommendation is that the zoning board of appeals forward this case to the city council with a recommendation to approve, uh, subject to the following conditions. Uh, number one, that the associated proposed replat of lot 452 is approved. Um, number two is that the site is developed in general conformance with the attached proposed site plan. Number three is that the impacts caused by the additional pavement width are minimized on each subject lot by doing one or more of the following, um, by tapering the area of the additional width, uh, to the extent possible, um, so that it's not that wide all the way down to, um, all the way down to the, the lot line. Uh, the second one is using permeable paving materials for the area of additional width. Uh, the third, uh, using a contrasting surface material for the area of added width, and the last being adding enhanced landscaping to the area next to the access drive. That concludes my report. I can answer any questions. I know the, the applicant, um, is here, as well as the engineer who is working on the replat. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Hearing none. Thank you.
Thanks.
Is the applicant petitioner present and wishing to be heard? Do both of you wish to be heard? You can come up at the same time?
Yeah, I can.
You can head to the chair.
I can, no, I can.
Or just one of you, it doesn't matter.
Sit back down.
As I informed the previous speakers, you have to sign in.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Yeah, I'm Mike Friend. I'm an engineering manager with the Farnsworth Group here in the champagne office, and I'm representing, uh, Mr. Richardson here tonight and working with him on this project, sir.
Do you have a statement, or are you just available for questions?
Yeah, I would like to make a few observations, if that's all right, sir.
Please do.
Yeah. And so, uh, first, I just wanna acknowledge the staff here have been great to work with, right? So, uh, Kevin, Marcus, okay, and I guess I didn't interact directly with Ms. Pearson, you know, but, uh, the staff here have been great to work with, and I would just wanna lead with that, that observation, and I appreciate that. And, uh, um, perhaps goes without saying, but, I mean, Mr. Richardson has got a, a, a long and very positive history in terms of the development here, and, uh, I think that probably there's good understanding of, uh, the, the quality of the work and the type of things he's doing. And so, uh, I, uh, would be remiss if I didn't point that out, that this, it's, it's an opportunity for, uh, a gentleman who's, uh, got that type of track record to do a new thing. And it's always encouraging when you've got a guy who is proactive, wants to step forward, wants to invest in the community and do things, and so, um, that's a, that's a great thing. Uh, so that's a pretty subjective comment, but, uh, be remiss if I didn't make that. As we were beginning this process and interacting with the staff, uh, and this driveway width, uh, thing came about, we thought, oh, what are the ways that we can mitigate the design to have as small of a differential as possible with the ordinance? And so, one thing, um, to point out, and I think the staff has pointed this out, is that, you know, these adjacent properties were developed before there was a driveway width requirement, okay? And they have, uh, sixty percent, okay, of the, of the lot width. And that, and that, and I think it's a, a good point to say that that sixty percent, uh, is for the entire width of the driveway, which means on the right-of-way as well as on the private property. So, one thing that we did, if you, uh, observed the drawing, is that we said, you know, what we're really after here is what we need to be able to access the garage. And so, we're fully compliant on the city right-of-way, right? So, we're holding our forty-five percent of the lot width on the city right-of-way, right? And the building itself is set back forty feet, okay? So, um, that portion of the drive that's on the city right-of-way, okay, is compliant width-wise. Uh, the place where we're requesting the variance is on the private property only. And so, we say, you know, once we get on, you know, past the right-of-way line, then we are suggesting a taper that allows us to gain that either additional four and a half feet or one point eight feet, okay? So, that's one thing that we did, uh, in response to the interaction with the staff here, is we said, okay, we wanna mitigate this to the greatest extent possible by, while achieving what we want to achieve, which is access to the entire structure, okay? And so, that's one point that I, I guess we wanna take credit for, okay? And then that's a result of the staff, you know, pointing out to us what, you know, uh, what the requirement was clearly. So, we did that. I think Mr. Richardson, uh, also makes the point about, um, off-street parking, right? So, I think that, uh, in his estimation and his opinion, that, uh, the, the clientele that would purchase these units will have frequent visitors, and, um, he views it as, um, beneficial to have off-street parking, which would occur in the driveways, uh, rather than on-street parking. And so, uh, having this additional width, yeah, gives them, gives them room to maximize the off-street parking, right? And, uh, I think that's mentioned here in, in, in the report, you know, you didn't read every word of that here in the presentation. I, so that's worthy, uh, to note as well. And, uh, I think that it was really well said that, um, you know, this is really, um, driven by, uh, the current market and the climate here. And so, Mr. Richardson is a, uh, intelligent businessman, and he's done his research, and he knows what it's, what kind of thing, uh, will be saleable, and, uh, um, so he's got this design made, and that was well said, uh, by the reviewers here in the report. So, I point that out again as well. I, if I could, I'd like to just talk about the, the suggested, um, conditions or recommendations. Is that appropriate at this time, sir? Yeah. So, uh, tapering the area of the added width to the extent possible. And, and as I spoke with Marcus and with Kevin, my understanding for that is just, right now, we depict, yeah, I don't know, Kevin, could you bring that drawing up, please?
Yeah. Um, so sheet C one point O, um, depicts, and maybe if you could zoom it up onto one of the small lots. Thank you, Kevin.
So, maybe even more, these are infinitely zoomable.
Infinitely zoomable. Infinity is a good thing. Yeah, so, so you see there then, um, that, so that little cross-hatched area is the additional width that Mr. Richardson's requesting here, right? Right there where he's, uh, putting the, the hand there, right? And, um, so, the, uh, the, the thing that we're, that we're, we're discussing here then is beginning that taper, my understanding of, um, condition three A, I'll call it here, is tapering the area of the added width to the extent possible would be to, instead of starting the taper right at the property line to perhaps move it closer to the face of the building structure? Is that a correct interpretation, guys? Yeah. And so, um, I think the point here is, the reason to have the additional width is to be able to get the vehicle into the door, right? Um, and to be able to provide a parking space that's there outside the building that would, that would accommodate a, a vehicle, so theoretically you get three cars side by side there. So, uh, there's, so my comment is, is I think that Mr. Richardson would be, uh, minimal to that, uh, subject to the need really to have a full vehicle length, which is around twenty feet, I would say, uh, available of full width. So, that, that is, is possible there, uh, so that's my comment on, on item A. Item B, um, suggests using permeable paving materials for the area of added width. And so, I think that the suggestion there is, we're talking about, uh, stormwater impact mitigation, in my perception there, okay? Um, by, uh, having permeable pavers, you reduce the runoff rate for that additional width. Um, and so, um, you know, the, um, I guess my initial comment is, is that the stormwater management design, you know, it isn't like we're going to overwhelm the stormwater management system of the subdivision by adding either one point eight or four point five feet to these driveways. Now, I'm not saying that we would not mitigate the stormwater somewhat if we use permeable pavers. I'm not suggesting that, but I am, but I do wanna make sure that I'm clear that the stormwater management design from an engineering perspective for the site doesn't require permeable pavers to be able to manage the stormwater that's associated with, uh, with this small increase in the width, right? And as has been pointed out, you know, the adjacent sites have sixty percent of the lot frontage covered with driveway, all the way out to the right-of-way, so, this, this is actually a little less, uh, intrusive in terms of the coverage than what some of the other adjoining, adjoining properties are. And those were developed before the regulations changed a little bit, so that's just an observation there. So, um, so I'm, you're saying like, okay, we understand. And so, from Mr. Richardson's standpoint, he would, what his real preference would be, would be to just have a concrete driveway, okay? I'm not saying that he would absolutely, and I guess, Ivan, you just need to make sure you pull me up short here if I'm misspeaking. you pull me up short here if I misspeaking, but my understanding in my conversations with him, he would really just like to have a cast-and-place concrete driveway, is what he would like to have. My, my observation of that would be that if there is a strong predisposition that the added area would be, would use permeable pavers, I think the aesthetics of these units matter. How it looks matters. And I would be so bold as to suggest that there might be creative ways to incorporate permeable pavement in this driveway that would be more aesthetically pleasing than just making just the exact area where we're asking for more width on there. And the net effect, from an engineering standpoint, from a stormwater mitigation standpoint, would be the same. So what I'm suggesting is, is that we might maybe incorporate the permeable pavers in a way that's more aesthetically pleasing than only exactly in the cross-hatched area, and the effect is exactly the same from a stormwater standpoint. So I would, first of all, he would like to have all concrete, okay? I'll just say that again. Second of all, if there's just a strong feeling that he must have permeable pavers for this additional area, and we're, you know, you know, we're talking about four and a half feet or two feet here. We're not talking about 20 or 30 feet extra, right? We're talking this much. So that perhaps you, you say, listen, the issue here is the area, and that we're not going to specify exactly where you need to put it, as long as you get that many square feet of permeable pavers in, and you do it in a way that's aesthetically pleasing, that that's just as beneficial as specifying that's exactly where the cross-hatched area is here. So that would be a latitude that I think would be consistent, from a technical standpoint, if, if that was the driver here, right? And, and, you know, and I think you're after, I mean, there's an aesthetic component to the reason this regulation's here, as well as an engineering component. And so when you say, so that's my long-winded commentary on B. He'd rather not do permeable pavers. If he has to do them, he'd like to have the latitude to place them in a way that's aesthetically pleasing, is the quick way to say that. C is the contrasting surface material for the area of added width, and I guess I'd like to just get a little, kind of exactly what you mean by that, Kevin and Marcus and Ms. Pearson, if you could.
Can I first make sure that you understand we were talking about potential options for you? We were not suggesting we were requiring each of these. So I want to make sure you understand that, and I'll let the others respond.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. Sorry about that.
So I think the idea with, with that one is just that you'd use some other material so it didn't look like just a large slab of concrete, all the same color, all the same texture.
Okay, all right. All right. Okay, thank you, Kevin. So that could be consistently performed with what I suggested before, which is, it's not so much that you want to specify the exact place where that texture would be, but that out of that increased surface area, that we use something that would have a different texture or color or something like that. And I think that would fit well with the notion of designing the permeable pavers if they end up being, you know, a stipulation in a way that's aesthetically pleasing. So, and, and I think that there probably would be a better-looking way to do it than just have just that hatched area be that, would be my opinion, right? I guess I'm an engineer, not a, an artist, but that would be my opinion. So really, what I'm hearing then is that if the permeable pavers do end up becoming something that is a requirement, that you'd like to see a different texture or color or something that would break up that expanse somewhat to do that. Is that, is that consistent, Marcus? Yeah, okay. And then adding enhanced landscaping to the area next to the access drive? And so just like a bit of explanation about what that could mean, probably?
I'm not entirely sure. So these came out of a brainstorming session on, on potential mitigation. So I'm not sure if that's doing, I guess that's really saying just not turf grass, so, so doing some sort of landscaping to, you know, to, I guess, pretty up those areas, the yard areas.
Yeah, and so I guess I understand that. And so what we're really, we're talking on the private property and on the right-of-way, obviously, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So I think that's a, that's a distinct differential, right? That we're talking about, you know, a potential condition that would, that would stipulate something on the, on the, on the private property side, not on the right-of-way. And I guess that could be included in covenants or something of some sort, that there's a specified minimum additional area of something, or, I'm not sure how that would be accommodated, but each homeowner, just like for you folks, if you have a front yard, you know, you have a way that you want to landscape it and how you want it to look, and, and I understand if that is, ends up being something that's a suggested portion of this, but the, the purchaser of the, of the home would be, would need to find something that was acceptable there. I don't think we want to get into specifying types of plantings, you know, but just something, something that's enhanced and not just turf grass, is kind of what I'm hearing. So, so I guess here is my summary then, is that Mr. Richardson is encouraged and wants to do this development, and I think that's a great thing for the city. Second thing is, is that I think that he has already worked at reducing the driveway width on the right-of-way, so he can be conforming there, which is a step he's taken from the initial submission. So that, that's not necessarily reflected in what you see here, but I'm just saying the first pass with, with Kevin included it all the way out, you know, where we would have needed the variance for all the way out there. So we said, okay, we'll, we'll be complying on the right-of-way. And I want to take credit, have Mr. Richardson take credit for, for, you know, meeting you halfway, as it were, already, okay? And again, I would state that his preference would be that it would just be a concrete driveway, all right? That would be his preference. And, and the, and then if indeed there is, ends up being a requirement of, of those permeable pavers, that we be allowed the latitude to place them in a way that is aesthetically pleasing and just hold the area constant. So that's, Mr. Richardson, now's your chance to speak up or to say something that I said that you don't agree with.
Hold on for a minute.
Yep.
You have to take any questions, if there are any, before we have.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Sorry about that, sir.
That's all right. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Go ahead.
So the driveway thing, taking up a certain percentage, I appreciate all of, you know, the work that you've already done, the developments that you've done. I really get the sense that you are really doing the bare minimum to kind of comply with this. And I get that. I mean, you are developing these properties for a reason, you know, you need to make a profit, but there's kind of a lack of creativity here, and the point is not to like, you know, figure out how to pour enough concrete to get three cars in the driveway. I don't, I have a lot of questions. Why do three cars need to be in the driveway, for instance?
Why do three cars need to be in the driveway? Or why is there a three-car garage?
Didn't you say at one point for three cars to fit side by side?
Sure.
Each of these is a three-car garage. I take it.
Yeah, sure. Mm-hmm. Yeah, so I think, I'm sorry, go ahead, ma'am.
Oh, no. I mean, that's it. I guess the fact that it goes all the way down, I mean, three cars could certainly access the garage without the additional concrete being poured all the way down to the sidewalk.
There could be a bit of a reduction there, but you want to be able to access the garage door without driving in the grass to get to it, right? So, yeah, so, so the taper, you know, being moved closer to the garage is something that could happen, you know, maybe there could be six or eight feet of it further before you start the taper. I mean, you need to have, you lay the vehicle turning a radius on there, make sure that you can actually make the physical maneuver with your car to get the car in there, you know, into the door. So there's some latitude there that, that could happen.
But additionally, three, you mentioned guests coming. Is there like a specific client that we need to be considering for these units, where they would be having more guests?
Well, I guess it's kind of like your house at Thanksgiving or mine, or at some other family gathering, you know? There's, and Ivan, I guess you could maybe, if you want to speak to who you anticipate the purchasers to be, although you cannot guarantee nor predict with certainty who will buy these units, I mean, you're feeling that if they have frequent visitors, that, you know, it wouldn't be uncommon to have three vehicles there?
I don't know if I can speak here. I can't speak here. I got it.
Yeah, so.
Hold on. If you don't feel like you can answer that question, or if you want him to answer that question, then we'll hear from him, so.
Yeah. So I can't answer the specifics of the speculation about why there might be three cars. My, my answer is, I don't know, and Mr. Richardson will need to speak to that, ma'am.
Okay. So in terms of the permeable pavement, is that a realistic consideration? I mean, I get that there's a massive retention pond behind it, but that doesn't mean we have to, you know, pave the adjacent 40 acres or whatever. So in order to increase the permeability via landscaping or whatever, are those, do you feel like those are realistic options that could be included, using permeable pavement or pavers or, you know, to whatever extent is fit? I mean, just doing a different type of pavement on the additional is really neither here nor there. I think incorporating them in general, is that a realistic option?
I would say from an engineering standpoint, it's possible, and I'll have to let Mr. Richardson speak to whether or not that's something that he's desirous of doing. But from an engineering standpoint, is it possible to design permeable pavers into the overall driveway layout? Certainly. Mm-hmm, yeah. I mean, there, you know, there's up and downsides to those things, you know? There's benefits and drawbacks, both.
So there's these conditions here, and it says that, you know, you could minimize the impact of the additional pavement by doing one or more of the following. And you're really pushing that, of course, he would just rather pave the entire thing, but I just want to clarify that, like, these are there for a reason, and so I think it would be good to see some level of commitment to doing one or more of them, if we're going to approve it. That's all I have.
Are there further questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Okay. Ivan, would you like to speak, sir?
Mr. Richardson, would you like to speak?
Yeah.
Come on up here. You may go ahead, sir.
Okay.
Introduce yourself first.
Yeah, Ivan Richardson, developer of Berge Commons. I don't know if you know, our street there is not real wide on that there, and it's very important when you have people come over, if they ain't got a bunch of cars parked out on the thing to go, and this is the ideal, if you've got a three-car garage, you want to be able to use a three-car garage, and you want to have as many people to park off the driveway or out the street as you can, for safety reasons. We didn't have set 40-foot back, but we did, because we want space out in front and stuff, and be able to park there and stuff. I mean, this is something, when you go by, you wouldn't know if it's two foot, I mean, you ain't even going to know the difference whether it's four foot more on them ones. I don't know if, if you know where gateway shops are at here in Urbana, but I put that indoor-outdoor turf in the things and stuff, and that's seven, eight years old. That's very expensive to do, but it looks good year-round. It's very green. I don't do things because of the cost. I do things because that's what people want. And I've dealt with this project over 20 years, and I know what people want. I've got people that I've had to do these driveways out there when I built the houses. Everyone of them come back and want to know if I'd redo the driveway for them, because they back off in their yard and stuff. And I mean, it's, if it's, if it's a problem with water or something, I could understand this, but this is just, somebody's trying to tell us how we design our things, and we got pictures, I don't know if you've showed around tonight?
Yeah.
I'd like for you to look at the pictures of the, what these units are going to look Shows the green areas and everything else on those, too. So there are different shots of it. In a minute ago, we had a thing about who would be buying these units. We've got a couple right here that's very interested in it, and they live right there right now, and they come here to support this, because they're very interested in buying one of these. I've got all kinds of people that I've dealt with over the years. It's definitely interested in these, but we're going to do a model, really deck it out, and we're going to have them sold as we build them.
Do you have any further comments, Mr. Richardson?
No, if anybody's got any questions.
Well, I was going to ask that.
Okay, sure.
Does anybody have any questions for the petitioner? Hearing none. Yeah, I'm sorry, Ashley, go ahead.
Well, just further what I asked earlier. Do you find any of the conditions to be realistic or manageable within your budget, or?
It is. If I think it's really important, and I just can't believe it's going to make that much difference for what it's going to, if it could save one or two cars being out on the street and stuff, that's going to be much more important than doing what you're talking about. It might look not, look like it's your cheap, and people think, well, he didn't want to go the expense of doing it right. And that's, to me, when you start adding stuff on, it's like you're adding on something that you haven't decided in the first place. Now, there's one thing that I do think could be probably okay. If it's four foot wide, two foot on each side, put a, you could get this stamped brick and stuff and make it look like a brick on both sides, but they can still park on it. I think that would be very, and it'd be very attractive, too. So I think that would be one thing that we, I could, and I think that would look nice, because you've seen a lot of driveways that's got, you know, brick sides on it, and on those ones, I would, I'd definitely consider that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold on, Ms. Richardson. I think we have another question. Charles, did you have? No. I think I misspoke. I think you are done, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor? And I don't believe, were you sworn in, sir?
No, I was not.
But you now wish to speak?
Sure.
Please come forward.
Do you saw this worthy testimony given this evening, are you true and accurate to the best of your belief?
I do.
Thank you.
My name is Morris Funkhauser. I live at 2936 Rutherford Drive. I've lived there about 11 years now. I would like to address the situation with the driveway and the parking. I have had incidences where my two sons, my grandchildren, come over, and they have to park on the street. The street is very narrow there. You've got parking on one side of the street. If I have them for Christmas, I have them for Thanksgiving, like the holidays is coming up, you'll end up in that area, if there's other people that have guests, you've got a whole street full of cars, so there's only one car can get down through there. You need parking off the street. My driveway will accommodate, sometimes if there's small cars, I can get four cars in the driveway, one behind each other. But if all my kids show up, my grandkids show up, they can't park in the driveway, so they've got to park on the street. So I think you're looking at a safety issue as well as an aesthetic issue. I'd be glad to answer any questions, if you need input from somebody that lives there.
Are there any questions to be addressed to the speaker?
No.
Hearing none. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I have to ask this, is there anyone opposed? There's no one else present, but is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, is there any additional staff report now based on the comments that have been made since the staff report? No. All right. Yes, Charles?
All right, so in our recommendation number three, where you were, you're saying that it would be nice if, that he, that they need to do one of the following, now do we need to change the language there a little bit to reflect the conversations we just had here? Or would that be included in the text of the meeting?
Well, I think the conditions, if you choose to impose any, would be, would be up to the board. So these were just, we just wanted to give some suggestions for you to choose from, or create your own, or...
Just to add, I would, for instance, Mr. Richardson mentioned the different material along the sides. I would interpret that to meet condition 3C, using a contrasting surface material for the area of the added width. We could define area, meaning surface area, not necessarily that exact area. So I think it's inclusive enough, but if you wanted to build in a little more flexibility to accommodate that, we could do that.
Well, when I read this, the flexibility was there to begin with, because it just requires them to do one of these things, right? So if they tapered the yard up five feet, that would be the condition. So we're leaving the ability, they have the ability to do what they want, and I guess we should eliminate the added width language there, so it gives them the flexibility to do it wherever they would like to do it? Is that right or not?
You could certainly do that. I think the reason we put that in is to ensure that that same amount, to use a different term, that same amount was accommodated in some way, but...
Same amount.
So for instance, if it's four and a half feet wide, we would want to see a contrasting band, if you were going to do it on both sides, of two and a quarter feet on each side, or something like that, so that it was sort of, it would make up.
Right. Well, I don't remember seeing one of these where we gave the applicant an option of doing four different things. It's always do this, do this, do this, do this. And I'm a little confused here. They're saying they will do something probably, but how we're going to communicate that, I'm not sure. Like the number D, or letter D, the landscaping, from the conversation, it seemed to me that that's going to be pretty much up to the individual homeowners, so I don't even see why we might need that. But then the other three areas, you know, the discussion was, you know, very good on that, but I, is the staff happy if we would just leave it with the way it was written, or do you want something added in there?
Well, I will say, although maybe for variances, you don't often see a variety of things, but often for things like special use permits or planned unit developments, which are generally more development-focused, we do often give options so that things aren't sterile, and we can't necessarily think of all of the possible options before going in. It gives the designer some ability to use a few different options. But really, it's up to the board what you want to recommend to counsel. I can understand your concern with the landscaping, and that is often an enforcement concern as, you know, as things go on. We were just looking for anything that might help to soften the impact. If you don't feel that that one's effective, then certainly that's your prerogative to not recommend that go-forward, or to add other language to make things more specific.
Go ahead, Joanne.
I would like to just eliminate three entirely. In my job, I, as a assessor, I've looked at a lot of driveways. I've looked at, you know, up until 2001, I looked at every driveway in town, and at one time or another. And I will say that when you have a tapered driveway that, you know, goes over like that, I happen to have one at my house, inevitably, people drive straight back down, and it's generally mud. When people have added on to a driveway on the side, you know, to extend it and make an extra parking place, it generally never looks very good. The surface will sink sometimes or crack, because it's just a, you know, a narrow mound. I have been at every, all the condominiums and zero lot lines that Ivan has built over the years, and the quality of his work has always been excellent, and they've looked very good and held up over time. And I just think that we should let him use his best judgment as how to pave these driveways. So I would just not want number three at all.
Further discussion comment from any of the board members? Go ahead, Ashley.
I just have a brief question for staff. Is there a concern about the parking on the street? I mean, I don't think we generally design our driveways for Thanksgiving and Christmas, so I just want to state for the record that parking on the street is not unacceptable. I do it in my neighborhood.
We haven't done a parking study, but I will say that often in this type of development that has narrow lots and wide driveways, there often isn't a lot of opportunity for parking on the street, because it's, there's not a lot of space between the driveways. So that may or may not asperate the issue.
Got it. Thank you.
Then, at this time, I would call this motion, or if, it doesn't have to be exactly as written, but I would call the motion for vote. Does anybody have, excuse me, I'd called the case for a vote, is there any motion?
I'll move that we approve ZBA case 2016, major 11, and send it to the city council with the following conditions. Number one, the associated proposed replat of lot 452 is approved. Number two, the site is developed in general conformance with the attached proposed site plan titled replat of lot 452, Berenger Commons subdivision. Number four, with the submitted lot dwelling and access drive configurations and placement. Number three, the impacts caused by the additional payment are minimized on each subject lot by doing one of the following. A, tapering the area of added width to the extent possible, and B, using permeable paving materials wherever possible. That's it.
All right. It's now been moved that we approve this and forward it on with the conditions as Charles specified, that being number one, number two, and numbers three, A and B, on page six of the report. Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
The motion has now been moved and seconded. Call that for a vote?
Mr. Warren Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Weiscock?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Ms. Chester?
Yes.
And Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
That motion carrying by the applicable percentage necessary will now be forwarded on to the city council for their consideration, and when will that be?
Um, we're going to turn the case around for the 21st of this month.
Next week?
Monday, yes.
That case will now be heard at the city council meeting of November the 21st, 2016. That case is now concluded. Is there any old business? Any new business? Any audience participation? Hearing none, any additional staff reports? Study sessions? Hearing none of the above, I believe our business is included, and I move that we adjourn.